Good evening, everyone. My name is Frederick Moreno. I'm Lackawanna City Council President. The purpose of this public hearing is to provide citizens with an opportunity to express their views, excuse me, and have an open session regarding the operation of short-term rental properties in various zoning areas of the city. As required by New York State Municipal Home Rule Law, a notice was published on December 6th, 2024, in Buffalo Business First, the city's official newspaper, as well as the city's website, social media, bulls and boards, and other public venues. All those in attendance are requested to register in the front of the room if you have not already done so and indicate your desire to speak. I respectfully ask that all speakers limit their presentation to a maximum of three minutes as this hearing will conclude promptly at 6:20 p.m. in order to begin the caucus portion of the city council regular meeting at 6:30 p.m. In addition, if you have previously spoken on this matter at the October 7th city council meeting, please request to speak at this hearing only if you have new information to share. Otherwise, I ask that you allow others who have not spoken yet on the matter and give them an opportunity to do so. All comments will be directed to me as the city council president, and this is not an opportunity to engage the individual council members in a discussion, a debate, other than to present your position and will listen and consider the same. In addition to that, I'm going to open it up to our Director of Development Chuck Clark, and the reason I'm doing that is he amongst others have done a substantial amount of work. There was an ad hoc committee made up of council members Anderson, Uflahi, city attorney Gahn, and Director of Development Clark, who met on this issue to discuss various pros and cons, and I know that the city attorney and the Director of Development have also done substantial work on this in further research of this topic. None of us on this city council have taken the matter lightly. We've listened to the arguments in the past via phone calls and numerous people who have decided to come forward and have personal discussions with us, and I apologize if some of us haven't gotten back to you to have private discussions. It's only because I believe we've heard all of the discussions from individuals, from the individuals in question. To that end, Chuck, I would ask that you briefly give us a rundown of what your findings were.
Yes, happy to do that, Council President. Thank you. So the very first thing that we did in looking at our research was really try to better understand what a short-term rental was, and at the end of the day, a short-term rental is a business that's being operated out of a residential property. It's a lodging business similar to a motel and a hotel. The property owners or operators use online platforms to generate bookings. They pay occupancy taxes just like a hotel or a motel would, but they're operating their business within a residential structure, which tends to be a little bit of the consternation in terms of what's happening there, businesses and residential communities, what have you. Verbo, online short-term rentals are a huge business. It's $36 billion nationally and expected to be close to $80 billion in the next 10 to 12 years. So we're not talking about little mom-and-pop operations here. We're talking about, you know, a pretty sizable entity. So that's the first thing we did. The second thing we did was actually in response to the councilwoman Mufahi's comments, we looked at whether or not there was any short-term rental activity occurring in the city today, even though we don't have an ordinance, we understood that there would be. There are 18 properties that we were able to identify from either Airbnb or Verbo websites that are listed as short-term rental properties in the city. Out of those 18, 14 of those listings or 78% are in residential neighborhoods. They're either in single-family residential neighborhoods or mixed residential neighborhoods, and the importance of this will come up a little bit later. I'm not sure which member of the council asked for this, but there was a request to see whether or not there was any public safety or police activity at any of these properties, and what I'm about to say is not indicative necessarily of short-term rental, but over a period of a number of years and for various reasons, 15 of those 18 listed properties have some form of police activity on them for varying degrees and at certain points in time, and that those came from public safety and I can provide those to the council if so desired. So we do have rental activity in Lackawanna, and we do have this issue of businesses being operated in residential communities, and therein lies the rub. We've had these conversations about maintaining the integrity of residential communities from businesses, not that businesses are bad, but they have their place and they have their time. So we moved on to a couple of other impacts from this, and this is kind of a reflection of lots of people's work that I'm going to summarize. So it goes without saying that the Department of Development stands by its recommendation to not allow short-term rentals in the city, and there's five reasons why we went that way. The first and foremost is that concern about neighborhood quality. We did it, we did an analysis, and there's approximately 185 streets in the city of Lackawanna. 88% of those, or 163, are either some form of single-family residential or mixed residential. So to allow these operations that equate to a mini hotel would be bringing pretty much a lodging business into residential communities. That's the one concern we had. Communities like Niagara Falls, Lewiston, Elockville have banned short-term rentals in residential neighborhoods for quality of life issues. Buffalo is looking at the same. The second issue that we looked at was the housing scarcity in the city of Lackawanna, where a landlocked community that has a finite amount of houses, especially, you know, residential and mixed-use houses. If you flip a certain percentage of those properties to short-term rental, you are taking away the ability of a first-time homebuyer, a trade-up homebuyer, a city resident, I'm sorry, a city employee from, you know, being able to buy housing in the community, and we do not have land resources like a Clarence or a Lancaster or an Amber so we can come up with large-scale construction to replace the properties that flipped. So it kind of becomes a double-edged sword in that concern. And the reason that this is most concerning is that in July of 2023, Governor Hochul passed or signed into law something called Executive Order 30 that created this program called the Pro-Housing Community. Pro-Housing Community is a requirement now for any municipality in New York State to apply for large-scale grant funds like Downtown Revitalization Initiative or New York Forward. Those are two different types of large-scale grant programs, and here is the challenge that was put forward in that legislation, and that's a challenge for the city. So to certify, municipalities must demonstrate a commitment to protecting and growing housing supply while also promoting equitable access and affordability. So if you look at one of the economic drivers of Airbnb, on the owner's side, they get very substantial, in some cases premiums, on the rental versus what they would get in a normal long-term rental situation, and without the hassles of a long-term rental such as, you know, having to evict or property damage or what have you. And on the flip side, people who use Airbnbs tend to get better rates through these short-term rentals than they would in a hotel or a motel, and they've got housing-style accommodations. The point of the matter is if the more you allow short-term rentals to take over a limited supply of housing, the more difficult, almost impossible, it's going to become to present the city as a pro-housing community. You might argue, you know, why is that important? Well, the Renaissance Commerce Park is an example of state grants that allow the city to redevelop that property. Three other properties that we have sold to other companies for development are there because of the BOA grants in the Brownfield Opportunity Area. So economic development grants like DRI are very important to the city being able to do large-scale development in the future. We have applied three times in the last four cycles. We got one in the prior administration, and the last two times we have been declined just competitively. Our project didn't stack up to the others. But the main thing here is that you have to show that you're protecting housing. The other thing I want to point out to you, and I'll make these last two quick, occupancy tax. Everybody, many people are under the impression that the occupancy tax that is paid, including those on short-term rentals, comes back to the municipality. It does not. Occupancy tax in Erie County goes to fund regional tourism assets like the Convention Center and the Visitors Bureau, okay? Not to say that this is not an indictment of the county or how it spends its money, I'm just saying for a fact, we do not get one direct dime out of that occupancy tax money, but yeah, we're potentially incurring the expenses of added code enforcement expenses, police and fire expenses, and what have you. And that brings me to my last point. We have three full-time code enforcement officers that cover approximately 6,800 structures in the city of Lackawanna. We all know the challenges they face with long-term renters and absentee landlords of those properties. The concern is that bringing the equivalent of mini hotel businesses into our residential neighborhoods is only going to make that situation more challenging. So at the end of the day, what we looked at was what other communities are doing, what's going on in Lackawanna, you know, how does this benefit us in the short term and the long term, and where we ultimately came to is that Airbnb and Verbo's are a great business model in destination communities. The people by and large who run these operations are very good people, but in Lackawanna, you're a recovering industrial and service economy community. They don't fit, and in fact, they bring you more obstacles than they do benefit. And so that's a position that the Department of Development took. I know that's the mayor's position. I will not speak for Mr. Gahn, but I believe he believes in many of the things that I've mentioned, as I believe the councilwoman agrees to some of them, but that is where the Department of Development stands in the research that we did.
Just one clarification, Chuck. You mentioned the word destination-location. Is Lackawanna a destination-location?
Well, the destination-location is kind of a subjective thing. When I say something like that, I think of places like Ski Country, Elockville. I think of places like, you know, Chautauqua County. I think of even parts of downtown Buffalo, you know, near the waterfront, but, you know, the, when I say destination community, I mean a place that you wake up in the morning and say, I'm going on vacation there. And what this ends up being here in Lackawanna, at least what the activity looks like, is really just a way to close a gap in hotel accommodations that we don't have. We have a hotel that's not in our neighborhood, which is in West Seneca by the old mall, and then we have a hotel on Route 5, which is in Lackawanna, but other than that, there's nothing in the middle. So when we talk, when we say destination, it's more like vacation communities.
And one other point, are there any circumstances that you can think of or that you've uncovered in your investigation that would be considered a benefit to the city by having Airbnbs, financially, economically, whatever?
Well, indirectly, directly, no. I mean, at the moment, the biggest revenue source you would get would be occupancy tax. Hypothetically, if you allowed it, you could institute, you know, different fees and charges for things like, you know, site plan review and registrations and so on, but that's not huge dollars. That's more like covering your administrative costs to some degree. On the flip side, you could argue that, you know, the more traffic that comes into the city, the more people, you know, buy things in the city, the more they eat at your bars and restaurants and so on, you know, ultimately, you get sales tax revenue that comes down the line, but, you know, in terms of anything direct, short of instituting your own program with your own fees upfront, those would be the only things. And the city of Buffalo tried and failed under Mayor Brown, former Mayor Brown, to institute its own occupancy tax, and that was shot down in favor of the one that's at the county. So small opportunities, but not huge.
Yeah, thank you. And for everyone who's here this evening or anybody who may be watching at home, we on the council like to thank Chuck Clark and City Attorney John Gahn and both Carl Anderson and Councilmember Mufahi for their efforts in their investigation and input. And because Chuck made the presentation, please don't read into that as his being, that being his position, he is doing it at our request. That is not his position necessarily, but he is doing, what he's come up with has been at the behest of the council in order to shed more light on this, and we thank you, John, Carl, and Amira for that. Gene, do you have a sign-up sheet? Again, we're going to ask people to keep the three minutes. We're going to time it.
Council President, may I just add a little bit to the conversation?
Is it brief?
It is very brief.
Yes.
I'll try to make it brief, but I just wanted to address what precipitated the concern. Back in February, this was brought to my attention that there's multiple dwellings that are operating as short-term rentals in the city of Lackawanna, and at the time, I knew that we had no legislation that would protect either the city or people that would rent all these places. There was no inspections, there was no business registrations, there was no regulation that would even inform us of how many are operating. So back in February, and I remember it was the February 20 meeting, was when I proposed some form of regulation, whether it be we include it or reject it on the city level. So there is some misinformation in the community that we are doing this unbeknownst to the residents and kind of like going behind the scenes to completely ban this, when in reality, this has been something that was initiated back in February, and we have been working diligently to figure out if this is beneficial or not. So I wanted to dispel that completely, and we have been open to having residents speak with us, so, and I always try to operate with transparency as well as all of you, as my colleagues. We always want to be open and honest, so I don't ever want it to make it seem like we're going against the community. I'm a capitalist. I believe that people should be able to run and operate businesses, however, there's a time, place, and manner that's important. So whenever we make these decisions, it is not to outcast or to reject anyone from seeking a livelihood for their families. This is for the greater good. That is our, my ultimate goal. So that's what I wanted to add to the conversation, and I also want the individuals who have these businesses registered to know that a lot of thought has gone into this. This is not just off the cuff, let's just, you know, we're lazy, we don't want to entertain this, so we're just going to completely negate any of the proposals from those who are currently hosts or wish to host as short-term renter, rental businesses. So that's what I have to offer.
Thank you, Councilmember Mufahi. And just for the public's consumption, this matter is not on tonight's council agenda. The original matter had been tabled, and unless someone moves to remove it from the table and gets the majority of votes to remove it, to vote on it tonight, it's, if that's not done, then we're not going to entertain an ordinance necessarily tonight. So there may be, and if it's not brought off the table tonight, it's probably because council members want to spend a little bit more time considering all the necessary input that we've received over the time period and over the investigation, information gathering that has taken place. Now, as I call the names, please bear with me, I can't read some of the writings, so if I don't get your names correct, I apologize in advance. Our first individual is Corey Hill.
Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening. May I have everybody that is an Airbnb host raise their hand? I do have, I have two other people that have allotted the time to me, if that's fine with you guys.
I don't know if that's possible because I don't know what they were going to say or who those individuals were, if they were speakers at the prior occasion. If they were speakers at the prior occasion, it's not likely we're going to entertain that time period anyway. So you have three minutes.
Also, please state your name and residence for the record.
Sure, I'll do that. I just want to say this is not a black and white issue, an all-or-nothing issue. This is, there is a middle ground that can be capped, and we can find a middle ground on that.
What is your address?
Sorry, my name is Corey Hill, and I'm a full-time professional real estate agent and resident at 112 Alcart Street in Lackawanna. I'm here to speak on the proposed ordinance banning short-term rentals. I represent one of 28 Airbnb hosts in our city with currently only 23 active short-term rentals among approximately 8,500 household units in Lackawanna. Short-term rentals make up a mere one-third of 1% of the city's housing stock. The vast majority of these hosts, like myself, are proud Lackawanna residents, while a small minority are non-resident taxpayers. Regardless of where we reside, we are all tax-paying property owners invested in the well-being and success of our neighborhoods and the community as a whole. We come together tonight not as adversaries to the city council or competitors with one another as hosts, but as partners in shaping the future of Lackawanna. Decisions made here affect not only our individuals' property liberties, but also the economic opportunities that short-term rentals bring to our households, families, and cities. We believe that we play a supporting role in driving growth, maintaining property values, and showcasing the best Lackawanna has to offer. We are here to collaborate with the council to find solutions that balance community concerns with economic growth, ensuring our city thrives for all residents. To begin, I would like to clarify any misconceptions about Airbnb and identify what it means to us as hosts and the community members. Airbnb is a platform that connects owners with travelers looking for short-term stays, allowing us to stay, allowing us to share our spaces while welcoming visitors to Lackawanna. For us, it's more than just a way to earn income, it's a way to maintain and invest in our properties.
You have 30 seconds. Go ahead.
Well, I will just pass it on to the next person. Many of us depend on the income to, the income to manage and inflating costs of everyday expenses and keeping up with the significant financial burden in our city in taxes. Like many people here, I once believed that the stereotypes and stigmas of Airbnb, that they attract disruptive guests, cause noises in parties, and harm the character of residential neighborhoods. But after becoming a host myself, I see firsthand how these misconceptions don't align with reality. Responsible hosts like myself personally screen every guest.
Israel, thank you, but your time is...
Okay. Well, I will provide a copy to you, and I would like if you could please read it.
Thank you. Steve Grady. Mr. Grady, you spoke the last time at a council meeting. Do you have anything new to share with us today?
Just a couple of new points that I didn't cover last time.
Very good.
My name is Steve Grady. Address is 856 Greed Road. We are on the short-term rental market, and from an economic standpoint, for Lackawanna, people visiting spend over an estimated $265,000 in restaurants and bars in Lackawanna. I can attest to this based on the number of pizza boxes I throw out every month. The alternative is to stay at a hotel. I did analysis within two and a half miles. I can have eight guests stay in my second-floor unit. It's a 1,600 square foot, four-bedroom flat. Cost per night is $380 for one night. If they want to cook, they can serve meals for eight people. Cost per guest would be $66. Compare that to the average hotel price I did for five hotels, including La Quinta, three on Slay, and another one, I don't remember where it was. Eight guests, four rooms, cost us almost $2,100. They're going to eat out at $400 for the eight people. Now the cost is up to $310 per person, so there's opportunities for this, for people to visit at only $66 versus $300. Also, the income from the rentals for my wife and I as retirees allows us to stay in our home. We spent over $65,000 on our property in the last four years upgrading. Also, we have never had a complaint filed with us or the police call. I don't know if Mr. Clark's analysis included police calls that I made, because I did call the police twice for people that had passed out in my curb, and I wanted them rescued. Additionally, in the blizzard of '22, we housed five people and two dogs. These people were with us for three days. They arrived with clothes on their back. We fed them for three days. They helped me clean the driveways off until my snowboard broke, and then they shoveled two of my neighbor's driveways. One of them was a disabled vet. These people represent the people coming to Lackawanna through short-term rentals. In closing, I feel the city should actively and aggressively promote short-term rental market, not tear it down. This would be a huge mistake. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grady. Panta Prima?
Yeah, this is me.
Oh, yes.
One thing he failed to say is that we are commercial property.
Okay. Thank you.
So please kindly help. We are commercial.
Yes.
Been paying commercial taxes for many years.
Najir, is it Min or Mir?
Yeah, Najir. Najir. Hi, my name is Najir Mian. I'm representing my son. He lives in 93 Fine Street. He's a student. He's trying to pay a tuition fee and plus, you know, to make his living and just trying to survive. We spend a lot of money, go to the neighbors, never call the police, ever, and it's hard to support this Airbnb business, and unless my police, they're going to play.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Amy Bundell. Now, Ms. Bundell, you spoke at length at the last council meeting. Is there anything new you have to add?
Yes, I would like to address some of the misconceptions that I heard presented here tonight. While we all, 28 of us, met with Corey's house, it was a dynamic and resourceful, incredible group of residents here, and the information that we came up with together in sharing our experience and the economic impact is absolutely in the face of the facts presented by your Director of Development. The 36 to 80 billion dollar movement of progress that the country is going to see in Airbnb is going to be missed out in Lackawanna if you constrict dynamic and invested people from improving our community. None of us have had any police in our actions in our community, in our neighborhoods. Not only that, all of us have invested heavily in our properties, and we are some of the nicest properties in the city. Reflected here, you do not see one corporate or a large business owner. You see family members, you see residents, you see people who are the mom-and-pops. We are all mom-and-pops. I challenge you to find any Airbnb owner in this city who is not a mom-and-pop, because every person at our meetings at Alcart were local, and Mr. Anderson can speak to that. He saw the gorgeous nature of Corey's home, and he saw the rich diversity that we represent. I have not, in all the places I've lived in my life, seen such an incredible group of people together than I saw right here in Lackawanna, and it's something we should be proud of and we should encourage. This type of resourcefulness is something that is a strength of our community, and the state is not going to save us. Anyone looking at Bethlehem Park can see that. If you're concerned as a business operating in a residential area, take one look at the neighborhood that I birthed my kids in, Mulberry. If you would have constricted that business from operating in a residential neighborhood, you would have denied Lackawanna one of its proudest businesses, one of its most successful businesses that have even been highlighted in national television. I lived in that neighborhood for years, and all the neighbors, while we are inconvenienced by excess traffic and cars and parking, we embrace it because it's good for our neighborhood, it's good for our community, and it's good for Joe Yorgi, and we celebrate him, and we're proud of that business, and we are proud of our homes that we've invested, and we're proud of the money that it's bringing into our community, which is all coming from outside sources.
30 seconds.
The other issue that we're facing is the quality of life. We improve quality of life. All of our neighbors have appreciated that we take care of our properties, that the people that are visiting us respect them, and that they don't have to live next to an uncertain spot. We regulate ourselves. We don't need code enforcement to regulate us because the business and capitalism regulates us. We're successful because we care for our properties. The alternate is all around us. Look anywhere. Slumblers are not regulated. We need help. We can help you, help this city. Please help us.
Thanks, Ms. Bundell. I didn't get your address.
It's 64 Oliver Place, Hamburg Minter, 14075.
Thank you. Jacob Benifield.
How's it going? I've got some new things to add.
I've got some new things to add. Not looking for a debate or nothing, but just to address some of the items that Chuck had just mentioned, I'm just looking for a little clarity. For example, if I can just go through the five things he mentioned?
Well, we're not going to get in the exchange here. If you want to raise those issues and maybe make an appointment or speak with him afterwards, you're welcome to do that.
Okay. Then I'd just like to add, you know, Lackawanna, this is our identity. This is what we were kind of founded on, our own short-term rentals. Going back to steel plant days, people migrating here from the south, from other countries, people here somewhere to stay temporary. There's a movie made about us, Like One of Blues, which was a boarding house, which is a type of short-term rental. This is our identity. I mean, we should embrace it, and we should continue to encourage it. As far as taking money away from the city, we can actually help the city. As far as the DRI grant, the downtime violation grant, we looked into it. I contacted the state email back and forth. We're not a pro-housing community, because the application hasn't been made for the information that we were told. There has to be a resolution passed by this council stating that you're going to be a pro-housing community, and you're going to do everything in your power to do so, to be eligible to apply for these grants. And to my knowledge, from what I was told from the state, that hasn't been done. What else was there? Some other points would be that I can see tax, we do benefit from it indirectly, because tourism, all right? We got the Basilica. She just mentioned the Mulberry, which is a national thing. People come to see that. Local festival you guys started doing here, By the Lackawanna, Taste of Lackawanna. People come to town for weddings. They need places to stay culturally. And I've been told by the Arab community that they love it, because culturally, they keep their families together, the privacy for the women in the family, they don't have to be in hotels and multiple rooms, they're able to keep the family together. There's some new businesses opening up, new takeout places in the first ward, which will benefit from this. I see on the council's agenda for tonight that there are, three more business licenses are going to be approved. These businesses will benefit from these short-term rentals as well. And like it has been said, tens of thousands of dollars in property renovations. I just had 11 windows installed on one of the properties. It was over $8,000 two weeks ago. We're constantly making these improvements with private dollars. We're not doing grant money. We're taking our own private dollars and investing in it. We're being good neighbors, and we're just trying to follow this right. Also, I'll just leave these photos with you. There was a process in place, so I can pass those out. I have a copy in there, my rental application. There was a box on the rental application that says short-term rental. So there was something as far as regulation or finding out where the properties are. That was given to me back in April, and I know council member Mufly said it was back in February that you heard some things.
30 seconds.
Code enforcement take that application on both my houses, and said I had to register as a short-term rental, which I did, paid the fee, copied the receipts in there, and both applications are in there. So there was something in place. I just hope that we can continue with that and add to it and make it as beneficial for everybody involved in the community here. Not to mention, we can be short-term shelters for people that have house fires, that are displaced by other emergencies and things of that nature. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benifield. John Ingram?
I don't know. I would just, I would just want to sign up. I just wanted to...
Sorry.
Everyone had to sign. Have others?
For the next meeting.
And there's a Gene, I can't read your last name, at 72 Alcart? It's you?
Yeah.
You're going to speak at the right...
Everybody has to sign up and publish here.
Rigon Fidel?
That's okay. And you pronounce it good, so. Anyways, I think we already, well, first of all, my name is Rigon Fidel. My address is 1159 McKinley Parkway, and the property is actually right, right next door, 1151 McKinley Parkway. It's basically a double, and then right behind it's another double. The, we only have one unit that's allocated to Airbnb. The other three are long-term, so there is a balance there. I know they already talked about the economic benefits, which pretty much kind of helps bring tourists to Lackawanna, and I think Jake talked about how we have like weddings here in the summertime and everything like that. It's just a practical, practical way to house instead of, you know, having a hotel. We do have a short, only have this one and the other one over there, pretty much. And talked about, I think, one of the points that Chuck made was the limited housing and all that stuff. I mean, it's a very insignificant amount. I mean, it was, I know you guys said 18, which is very small. So it doesn't have a huge impact on long-term. It doesn't take away from that. But also, it maintains, you know, the housing balance. We have long-term, but we also have short-term, affordable short-term, which makes sense and practical for, you know, large families and stuff like that. Addressing neighborhood complaints would be through, pretty much through regulations, which the platform already has, like some rules and regulations that it already has for both the tenant and the host. The host is required to maintain a certain quality of their facility, or their apartment, or their unit, whatever it is. And then also, the tenant has obligations. If they fall under a certain rating, they could either get banned, and same thing for the host. If they fall under a certain rating, they could also get delisted. So it works both ways. The other thing is, it encourages property upkeep, okay? So when you, it incentivizes, like hosts, if they generate a little bit more income, it incentivizes them to spend a little bit more on their property, like Mr. Grady here and myself, too. Like, we redid the whole driveway this year. I mean, I'm still out of pocket, but it just, it attracts, it helps attract, you know, different tenants and stuff like that that are, you know, willing to spend and come to our city. Let's see here. It reduces property vacancies, you know, in the city. We have some people that are like snowbirds. They might want to fly back and forth. I know there's a gentleman that is not here today, but he lives in New York City and...
30 seconds.
Every so often comes back to the, to his house, which he just blocks off those days. And instead of it being vacant, it's a very smart way to do it. And probably just the last, but not least, is like, I know they mentioned the last time there, that we can have like a committee that can bridge that gap between the city and the Airbnb hosts, and maybe charging like a fee, like a booking fee through the platform, if the city works with the platform, to charge like a small booking fee. All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ahmed Salah?
Okay, thank you.
You don't want to come up and speak with us?
Can I give him about three minutes?
No, we can't transfer the minutes.
I'm not really good on public speaking, but...
Either are we.
So as, I'm a Yemeni, live on 123 Holland. We do have a big Yemeni community. We do have a lot of visitors that come out of Detroit, California, New York City, soccer tournaments, weddings, funerals. And I have sisters. I'm married. I have a little daughter. I would not want to stay in a hotel. If there's a whole house I could rent for $250, why not? That's all I got to say.
Thank you. And is it, I can't read the first name and the last name. It's Clark, I believe. Oh, that's Chuck.
That's me.
I can't read your writing, Chuck.
Can I say one more thing? I'm sorry. I have a apartment and only one short-term rental. So I'm not switching over. You see what I'm saying? I'm taking a hit right now on the short-term rental. So I'd rather go with long-term than...
Okay, thank you.
I've spoken.
And the last is, last name is Burrell?
I was just signing up.
Sorry?
I was just...
Just put your name out there?
Yes, yes.
You don't want to speak to us?
You guys seem like they got it together. I think if you guys work together, you come up with something in the middle that both parties could go with.
Hopefully, yeah.
We appreciate your comment. Thank you. All right, unless there's anything else, we're going to conclude our public meeting. We appreciate everybody coming here this evening, and the only thing I can promise you is that we'll continue to work to see if there's some kind of common ground that can be reached on this. The sooner the better. Thank you very much.